Thursday, May the 24th, 2018, regular monthly meeting to order. And at this time, I would like for you to stand for a moment of silence. Amen. You may be seated. At this time, I would like Dr. Bracy to introduce the students, please.
Thank you Chairman Parent. I'd like to say good evening to everyone.
Good evening.
And welcome to our regular monthly meeting. I have the pleasure to bring before you two students from James Hurst Elementary School. The first who will be doing the pledge is Jamira Toney Pierce. And as I call your name, will you please come forward? Jamira is a 4th grade student at James Hurst Elementary. She is an honor roll student and received the principal's award for the 3rd nine weeks grading period. Jamira is a member of the praise and worship dance team at her church, and she plans to attend the University of Richmond and become a movie producer. Here this evening with her are her parents, Mr. and Mrs. Greg Pierce. Would you all please stand and be recognized? And any other members of the family that are present with them. Next with our statement, we have London M. Coker. London is a 6th grade student at James Hurst. She is an honor roll student and received the principal's award for the 2nd and 3rd nine week grading periods. London volunteers during the summer with Portsmouth's Fire Department and participates with the Paint Youth Heart Out program. This is a program that helps rehab homes for Portsmouth's families in need. London plans to attend medical school and become a gynecologist. Please welcome her parents, her mother, Marissa Jones, father Leroy Coker, and any other members of the family. Will you please stand at this time and be recognized?
Would you please stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated.
So London and Jamira will be tag teaming on the statement tonight.
Mr. Parent, Chairman. Mrs. Williams, Vice Chair. School Board members, Dr. Bracy. Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. My name is London Coker.
And my name is Jamira Pierce.
We are students at the fully accredited James Hurst Elementary School, home of the Soaring Eagles. At James Hurst Elementary, we have swag. In other words, we soar safely in everything we do, we work together respectfully, we accept responsibility for our own actions, and we allow our teachers to guide us towards excellence because eagle swag is what we do. Our teachers, reading coach, reading interventionist, math specialist, and administrators are creative and dedicated to making sure that all of us are successful. They want us to maximize our academic potential so that we can positively impact our great city. As our principal, Mr. Barco, often stresses, do everything with the spirit of excellence. We have several academic programs that are designed to promote student-centered learning and raise academic achievement. Daily Five is a reading program used with students in kindergarten through 3rd grade. Students develop their reading skills by reading to self, reading to others, word study, working closely with their teacher, and on writing. This program also helps to build stamina with children as they collaborate with others in a positive classroom environment. iReady is a diagnostic reading tool that helps to identify children who are deficient in reading. The fun and engaging online lessons focus on reading skills such as vocabulary development and phonics and provide students with a personalized pathway for success. Leveled Readers are books which are used in the classroom by teachers during small group instruction to ensure students are being instructed according to reading level. The stories are integrated with passages that include science, social studies, and sometimes math. There are several other enrichment programs that are used in our school to help us soar, but these are just to name a few.
Technology. Recent technology purchases have enabled our teachers to specialize in instruction in ways that are exciting and hands-on. This school year, James Hurst was able to purchase one BenQ Smartboard for every classroom. These Smartboards allow for students to practice writing skills, solve mathematical problems, or view and explore subjects from the internet. They are totally interactive. Our hands-on activities are designed to cultivate knowledge as students explore the worlds of science, technology, literature, creative writing, and visual arts. For example, the 4th graders were selected to participate in a two-weeks arts-related program entitled Minds in Motion. This program was funded by a grant to our school division with our superintendent, Dr. Bracy, choosing the schools that will participate in this program. Minds in Motion was created by the Richmond Ballet to engage lower socioeconomic communities in a high-quality arts program that offers sustained interaction with professional dancers and artists. Thank you, Dr. Bracy, for selecting James Hurst Elementary as a participant in this grant-funded program. The 4th grade classes were exposed to the arts and were encouraged to believe in their own abilities to succeed. The final presentation at Churchill High School was awesome and fun. Read for the Record Day was also a success for James Hurst. Several community partners came to read the book Quackers to our students in kindergarten through 2nd grade. Our readers were members from the Phi Delta Kappa Incorporated sorority and Mayor John Rowe, mayor for the city of Portsmouth. Children were able to demonstrate skills learned in reading such as author's purpose, comprehension, and vocabulary.
Parent and family engagement is another area that has really taken off at James Hurst Elementary. This school year, James Hurst was provided with a parent and family engagement liaison. Our liaison, Mrs. Rita Wilson, is the best. Since joining the Soaring Eagles in September, she has conducted several school events that have resulted in increased parental involvement. On January 31st, 2018, our school hosted an event entitled Donuts with Dads. The purpose was to promote the participation of dads in the school. Students were able to enjoy a donut with their dad while their fathers learned about ways in which they could support the school. In fact, the presenter for that event is here with us this evening. Will Mr. George Wilson please stand and be recognized? Mr. Wilson is a retired police officer with the Hampton Police Department. During the month of March 2018, an event was held for our moms. It was called Muffins with Mom. Our mothers were presented with a workshop by our school psychologist entitled Conscious Discipline. Were these events a success, you ask? Boy, or where were they ever? It was estimated that approximately 300 people were in attendance at the Donuts with Dad event and 110 for our Muffins with Mom social. Our school is a fantastic place for learning and having fun. We are working extra hard to become fully accredited again this 2017 through 18 school year. With instructional support, help, and encouragement from our administrators, teachers, parents, and community partners, James Hurst Elementary will once again soar high as only an eagle can because we have swag.
Also, I'd like to recognize Principal, Mr. Morris Barco. Mr. Barco, if you would like to say something at this time?
Thank you, Dr. Bracy. I'd just like to commend these students. They are outstanding and truly represent James Hurst Elementary. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jamira, thank you so much for your presentation tonight. You will be responsible for the images we see in the movies coming forth, and I can't wait to see what you do. Ms. London, women's health is so important. We need more people out there like you, so multiple things will be soared by you being a doctor. You will cure somebody someday.
All right. At this time, Ms. Allen will read the school board mission statement.
The mission of the Portsmouth Public School Division is to engage all students in learning that will foster academic excellence and responsible citizenship.
Thank you. At this time, board members, please make your preference of attendance by electronic
All members are present.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. You have had the opportunity to review the agenda. What is the board's pleasure?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion's been made, and the second, do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, board members make your preference by electronic vote. Ms. Stewart is filling in for Ms. James, so we're going to all be very calm and patient with her.
And I don't do the other one. And it's not showing up.
That's all right. We're good.
You've got to put the item up there. The item is not up to you. This way.
Board members, now try it.
There you go.
There we go. There we go.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is the discussion by our student representative, Mr. Ian A. Robertson.
How y'all doing tonight?
We're doing great.
That's great. The even chair, vice chair, Dr. Bracy, members of the board, everyone in attendance, the millions watching at home. So we're coming to the end of May now, as you all probably know because you own calendars, which also means we're coming to the end of the school year, which is pretty great. I feel like every student just knows exactly how many days it is till they get to get out. I'm pretty sure every teacher knows exactly when the students are going to get out.
Probably seconds, don't you?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. They've got to synchronize their watches. Yeah, so, I know. Me as a senior, I'm just counting down to when I can walk, so. Yeah, I would like to congratulate all our students for getting done with SOLs. I think there's a couple more that have to get taken, but, you know, our students are great. I know they're going to do great. Even if there are going to be retakes next week or whenever, they're going to do great because that's just who our students are. Like to just, it's my last meeting, so I'm kind of, you know. I'd like to congratulate all our students for this school year, for everything they've done, all the students that have gone out and won things. Like, I don't win anything, but kids in Portsmouth are just winning things and bringing them back to Portsmouth Public Schools so we can say, hey, our kids did that, we're great, because we are great. Like, congratulate the leaders, the teams, the athletics, the academics, the artists, everyone, all our students that are doing amazing things. They're going to keep doing amazing things, and that's our future. I'm glad Portsmouth Public Schools is breeding them to do good things. They, I mean, they made me do okay things. I came up through Portsmouth Public Schools, and I'm just doing okay, but I feel like I can do good. I think, just an example of one of those good things that our students do, I think Douglas Park just won Chrome competition just recently, a couple days ago. Thank you. Which, I did Chrome Club when I was like this big, and I was not great at it, but I'm glad that our students are doing good. I feel like those kids are going to be the next breed of our robotics people that are going and winning world championships and stuff, or competing and losing, but they're still doing great. Proud of all of them, all our students equally. Yeah, so these children are what make our schools and our city great, and honestly, I'm honored to have had the opportunity to represent them this school year. It's been fun. It's been real. It may not have been real fun, but it's been, so, for the, I don't know if you guys have selected the new rep yet?
We will be doing that.
Yeah.
We've just had the applications turned in, and so we will be doing the interview.
Well, I-
The interview's probably next week.
Good luck and Godspeed to them because I freaked out when I first got on this job. I had no clue what I was supposed to do, but through the help of some board members that welcomed me with open arms, and Ms. Newsom, who's kind of been by my side through the whole thing, like reassuring me that I was not going to fail at this, like thank you all for that. Yeah, I'm just up here to like thank. That's all I'm good at. Like, thank the teachers that made me who I am today, the students who went with me on this journey, all y'all for giving me a job or whatever, someone putting on my resume. It's really, it's really been cool to work with you all. I'd like to do something like y'all in the future. I'd like to be a politician person. Like a good one, not like a sketchy one. See, I'd like to thank Portsmouth, Portsmouth Public Schools, made me who I am today, and if you guys have any questions or whatever, I'm here.
All right. Ms. Hines?
Thank you, Ian. It's been a pleasure this year to watch you go from the goofy grin to the confidence that stands in front of me now, and you say that you're just okay. And maybe it's the kid coming out in you, and maybe it's the teacher coming out in me, but there's greatness in there, and I hope that we have tapped into it by giving you this opportunity to be a voice and to be somebody who can advocate and share different points of views. I would love to be in your public speaking 101 class because you have done the hardest public speaking that I know of. I mean, unless I go in front of the Supremes, you know, I mean, I don't know how I would do up there. But the opportunities that you have had to grow, I'm glad you have been there and watched it happen. As a teacher and as a mom, you like to see your little fledglings get some wings, and your wings aren't finished. But you did a lot of growing this year, and I want to say thank you. I want to say thank you for being proactive and not being afraid to speak up for the students and share their ideas and share their points of view as well. That's not always a pleasant talking point, but you did it. So while you just say you're okay, I was an okay kid too, and I'm still just an okay adult. But every now and then, you get little flicks of greatness, and you need to know what your strengths are, and your strengths are listening, and your strengths are talking, and having those courageous conversations. So I just wanted to say thank you for being you, and I wanted to ask you one question. What is one piece of advice you would give to the next student that's coming into your position? I can't say your shoes because everybody walks differently, but for the next person that is wanting to do this, is interested in doing this, what would be one piece of advice you would give them as they take on this? And you haven't been in school since May, so I'll give you a minute to think about an answer for that one.
Honestly, I would just tell them to keep an open mind, care about the fellow student as much as they care about their best friends. You've got to go, leave no opinion unconsidered. Just throw yourself into the arms of the students and, you know, hope they tell you what to do so they can tell you guys what to do.
Thank you.
Zacherson?
Thank you, Chairman. I just want to say thank you for serving, thank you for your time, and congratulations, and you are a good representative of Portsmouth Public Schools, and you make us Portsmouth proud. So thank you, and I do have one question as well. What's the feedback that you're getting about graduation?
About being at the TED?
Just in general, anything you want to share.
I mean, I'm getting mixed reviews, but I feel like once it goes on and people have actually graduated, it'll settle down, and everyone will be pretty content.
How do you feel about it?
I'm content. It's cool. As long as I get to get my diploma, I'm all right.
All right, thank you.
I have one question for you. What is one takeaway that you have learned during this year as the school board student representative? What's the one thing you're going to take away from this experience?
Honestly, talking is scary, and that I'm pretty okay at it, and I am glad that I got to practice in front of y'all because you don't judge me too much, where like strangers would probably judge me and throw things at me. So I've gotten to like, gotten to learn what I can say and how to say things and get a good feedback from people. So I'd say how to talk is-
Very good. Now, if you will stay where you are, board members, I'm going to ask you if you will join me and Dr. Bracy down at the front. We're going to make a presentation, and we're going to have our picture made with Ian, okay? Ian, you want to come stand over here, and then we're going to put you over there. Ian, this is a plaque, and it says, "Award of Appreciation, Ian Robertson, in recognition of your dedicated service as the student representative of the Portsmouth City School Board 2018." Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Now, if you will join us, we're going to have our-
If you squeeze in tight, I can get everybody.
Seems like we've done this before.
Yes, yeah. A little bit closer, Mr. Parent. One more?
Oh, is that where? Oh, I didn't know. You're going to William &amp; Mary, or the College of William &amp; Mary? Very good. All right. All right, the next item on the agenda is the monthly report, Curriculum and Instruction. Dr. Win.
Good evening, Chairman Parent, Vice Chairman Williams, members of the board, and Dr. Bracy. Again, it's always my pleasure to bring the curriculum and instruction report. You will note that the written report is in board docs for this month, and in addition to that, we always have a special treat. Tonight, we have a student with us who participated in the local chemistry olympiad by taking the United States National Chemistry Exam. And she and, actually, it was she and some of her fellow students, and this was in March. Our students took the exam at Norfolk State, and two of them scored so well that they moved to the regional level. Tonight, we were here personally from one of those students as she shares her experiences with this prestigious and rigorous competition, and she is here tonight with her teacher from IC Norcom, Ms. Rondi Caldwell, I'm sorry, Ms. Rondi Caldwell, and we also have Dr. Foster, Dr. Legana Foster, who's here as well. So, I'd like to introduce you to Kalasia Hamlin. Kalasia, will you come up, please? And as she's walking up, I'd like you to know that she is the daughter of Kalito and Ebony Hamlin, and she began taking courses at TCC during the summer after her freshman year, and she is currently a junior here and is 18 credits away from earning her associate's in social science. She is enrolled in AP Chemistry at IC Norcom, and she wants to major in pre-law legal affairs with a minor in a STEM field. She wants to be a federal agent. I'm pleased to introduce you to Kalasia Hamlin.
Good evening, Chair Parent, Vice Chair Williams, members of the board, Superintendent Dr. Bracy, and all those assembled. As stated, I am a student enrolled in Advanced Placement Chemistry at IC Norcom High School. My classmate, Siani Rix, could not be in attendance tonight due to her track meet. However, on behalf of me and Siani, I would like to present our experiences in AP Chemistry. Again, to piggyback off of what she said, my name is Kalasia Hamlin. I'm a junior at IC Norcom High School with a cumulative GPA of 4.2. I'm currently taking classes at TCC, and I'm 18 credits away from earning my associate's degree in spring of 2019. I am a member of the IC Norcom basketball team and play for Virginia Beach Threat, a local AAU team. I would like to major in pre-law legal affairs with a minor in the STEM field and upon graduation pursue a career as federal agent. Siani, who is not here, is also a junior at IC Norcom with a cumulative GPA of 3.8. She is a member of the track and field team at IC Norcom High School. In addition to that, she plays soccer for Beach FC, which is a soccer league in Virginia Beach. Upon graduation, she will be attending the University of North Carolina-Greensboro on a full scholarship, majoring in business management. During this slimly short eight months, we have learned an abundance of information that has improved our critical thinking skills, developed our ability to apply chemistry to our daily lives, and communicate our learning with others. This year, we have completed that, this year, we have completed tasks that have allowed us to connect what we've learned to real-life experiences. We have applied gravimetric analysis to test our school's water. We have assisted Ms. Caldwell with her honors chemistry classes via tutoring and small group help. But our proudest moment came as AP Chemistry students when we took the qualifying test, local qualifying exam for the National Chemistry Olympiad, and qualified to move on to the national qualifying exam that took place at Norfolk State University. The exam consisted of three parts, multiple choice, problem solving, and a lab practical. This is not only a problem, but a groundbreaking moment as this was the first time in history that IC Norcom ever participated in the Chemistry Olympiad. I'm glad to be able to part of the achievement. I would like to take the moment to thank Ms. Caldwell. Without her guidance and support, we could never have imagined being able to learn and retain the vast information necessary to compete in the Chemistry Olympiad. So on behalf of Siani and I, thank you for inviting us to share our AP Chemistry experiences
And as Kalasia shared with you, we did have another student who also performed well, and that was Siani Rix, and she could not be here tonight because she's at a track meet. So these young ladies are very active, and as you can see, very involved, and we are so very proud of you and all that you're doing.
And aren't you on another prestigious committee?
I'm on the Superintendent Advisory Student Board.
That's right, all right. Let's not leave that out now. Thank you, congratulations.
Thank you.
But before you take your seat, I just want to commend you. It's very, it's not an easy achievement to be an athlete while maintaining a 4.2 GPA while taking AP classes and being 18 credits shy of an associate's degree as a junior in high school. You are truly amazing. You are a gift to this world, not only to just this city, and I want to commend you and your parents here also?
My teacher and her parents are here today.
Oh, okay. I want to commend your family, your teacher, your support system, because this is truly an amazing achievement, and you're a reminder to me as to why I do what I do and why I fight so hard, and these other board members also, for our students. You are the greatest jewel that Portsmouth has to offer, and I truly commend you for all you've done.
Thank you.
Would you all mind standing up? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, wait a minute. Dr. Whitaker?
Yes, good evening, and congratulations, and ditto on everything that Reverend Protillo said, but I would like to know, could the teacher come forward so we can get pictures with your teacher?
That'd be great.
We have to recognize our teachers because this would not be possible without dedicated teachers.[1774.01][1774.01][applause]
This concludes the Curriculum and Instruction Report. That's it.
Dr. Win, I always like this... I like to read your report, but I do like this part of it. This makes it real. The next item on the agenda is the consideration of the minutes of April the 19th, 2018, and April the 26th, 2018. What is the board's pleasure? Motion's been made. And second, do we have any discussion? Hearing, no discussion. Board members, please indicate your preference by electronic vote. Are we ready, Ms. Stewart? I see the green light, all right. Madam Clerk? Looks like it was unanimous. We're all green.
It is unanimous.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm trying to do what you're doing. I'm trying to slow down. I got to slow down, okay. The next item on the agenda is a public comment for non-agenda items. And I understand that we have a number of speakers. And would you read the rules regarding...
Yes.
...of the comment? Thank you.
The Portsmouth City School Board is always interested in hearing from the citizens of its community. If you have registered to speak prior to this meeting, the clerk will call your name when it is your turn to address the school board. If you have not registered prior to the meeting, you may be given an opportunity to speak by the chairman after the first group has been called by the clerk. When speaking, please keep your comments focused on issues that are of general interest to the school division and the community. This public comment period is for non-agenda items only. Due to the length of our meeting, the school board requires that you keep your comments to five minutes. An additional few minutes may be granted by the chairman. And our first speaker is Mr. Robert Lincoln.
Good evening, members of the school board. Tonight, I want to address the cost of some of the athletic programs for the Portsmouth schools. As you know, we use our schools to train students' minds and to some extent to train their bodies for their physical well-being. We train their bodies with games or sports such as football, soccer, lacrosse, field hockey. These are well-established sports, but they come with some problems such as injuries and substantial cost of equipment. These games also limit the skills that each player utilizes when playing. Today, I want to introduce you to a new sport that, if added to the school's athletic programs, will benefit more of the children and will cost the schools and children almost nothing to play. This sport is designed to eliminate serious injuries and reduce the injuries and also eliminate the cost of expensive equipment. The sport is called pole ball. That's spelled P-O-L-E-B-A-L-L, one word. The sport utilizes each child's ability to run, throw, catch, kick, and work together with others on a team. A detailed description of the game can be found in the website, poleballworld.com. I'll leave a copy of the rulebook for the board's use. There are two other websites that have information about pole ball. One is poleball.us, which describes how the game can be played on a smaller area, like a basketball court or a small playground, and by smaller children. And it basically eliminates the kicking part of the game, except that you can have extra points once you do score. And that gives... involves the kicking as well as all the other aspects of the game. It is important for the school board to save money and still provide many benefits for the students. So, to save money, I want to tell you about the lower cost and greater benefits associated with pole ball compared to other sports. Recently, on April 18th, 2018, an article appeared on page one of the sports section of the Virginia Pilot. The article said that there were 1,000 lacrosse players from the Southampton Roads High Schools who are trying to get the game of lacrosse recognized as a varsity sport in the high schools. One thing such recognition would probably do is get the schools to absorb the cost associated with the sports, with that sport. And this is a copy of the article. Took up the whole page and it talks about 1,000 students wanting to play lacrosse. So, to compare for you the cost of 1,000 players to play pole ball compared to the cost of 1,000 players lacrosse, I prepared a cost comparison, which I will leave with you. I'll leave this here with you, too. It shows that to play lacrosse safely, you need about $552 worth of equipment for each player. This does not include the cost of shoes, as we will assume the players will buy them their own shoes. Now, to play pole ball, there is no equipment needed. All that is needed is a number three or number four soccer ball, which costs $8 at Walmart. So, to play lacrosse, the cost would be 1,000 times $552, or $552,000. And to play pole ball, the cost would be $8,000. That's for one ball for every 1,000 kids. A similar cost comparison can be made with football and field hockey. I'm asking the board to consider the benefits of the game for the children and the athletic programs at the elementary school, the middle schools, and the high schools. Then, the board can recommend that the game be introduced to the students through the physical education classes and the intramural programs. Consider, two balls for a school would cost $16. So, for $16, a school can have two teams playing pole ball in some fashion. Now, the most expensive part of playing pole ball is constructing a three-pole goal. There's three poles that form official goal.
Excuse me, Mr. Lincoln, your time is up, but if the board wishes, I can grant him. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. But for non-championship play, you can substitute a number of things for the goal. As set out in poleballworld.com, the web... and other websites, you can use a player as the goal and then throw or kick the ball to that stationary player and score according to the accuracy of the throw or kick and award points. In conclusion, the school system can save money by substituting pole ball for some other sport in the sports program that is more expensive to play. Or it can just add pole ball as an extra new sport that will enable more students to play a team sport at almost no cost. So, for $16, you can have 44 students at a time playing pole ball at a school. I'll be happy to assist the schools in introducing the game to the students. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. I know you're going to leave that with the clerk, that information.
Yes, I will.
Thank you. Our Sergeant at Arms will take the information. Thank you. Madam Clerk, our next speaker, please. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Mr. Lincoln. I'm thrilled with you. Ms. Actonson, yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Lincoln, for coming out to speak. Also, I would also recommend that you send that to the Virginia High School League because all of our sports that we approve to play in the schools have to be voted on. It's a whole executive committee. But we can definitely look at that as maybe starting off as a club. But I would send that information to the Virginia High School League.
Well, I was asking the board to consider it for just that, the intramural programs and lunch just inside the school, so it wouldn't be part of that athletically as a starting point.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Mrs. Donna Si. Good evening. My name is Donna Si and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. Tonight, I will share with you the results of my effort to learn about the structure and function of the school division. The background information is under a separate attachment. Before my appointment at 1:00 with the Communications Director for the school division yesterday, I had just completed an appointment with the Human Resource Director for the city. By meeting with her, I refined the information that I wanted to know. When I arrived for my 1:00 appointment with the Communications Director, I had refined in my mind what I needed to complete my research. After I arrived, I was told that the Communication Director was not at the office. After a while, she returned from her appointment and took me to the computer room. When I was trying to explain what I needed, I was met with responses to control the conversation. As a result, I was not able to express what I needed or even to be understood in what I needed. This breakdown in communication prevented my needs to be met to get information I needed. This kind of breakdown in communication is an example why I went to Bethlehem, Pennsylvania to learn restorative justice practices. I needed to learn how to deal with situations where people dominated and controlled the conversation, like what I experienced yesterday with the Communication Director. I would like for someone to volunteer to mediate the Communications Director and myself with the restorative questions, one and two, to resolve the issue of the breakdown in communication that transpired yesterday. I would like the Communication Director to express her part in the breakdown in communication by answering these questions, the questions to respond to challenging behavior. One, what happened? Two, what were you thinking of at the time? Three, what have you thought about since? Four, who has been affected by what you have done and what way? And five, what do you think you need to do to make things right? Of course, she may not take any responsibility for her actions. Then, the facilitator would ask Donna the restorative questions, too, to help her resolve the harm caused by the Communication Director's actions. What, one, what did you think when you realized what had happened? Two, what impact has this incident had on you and others? Three, what has...
Hold on just a minute. I have a point of order.
Is this personnel that needs to be discussed behind closed doors? Because I really don't...
I think that... Yes, I think it does. I think you're...
I think it needs to be discussed, but I think this is not the proper time.
This is not the proper time to do it. I thought you were speaking on using restorative questions to resolve an issue. I didn't realize it was going into a personnel issue. If you have research, then finish with your research, but this is your...
Lastly, I needed an appointment with the Human Resource Director to obtain the information that I need to finish my research project. And that's the research I'm doing that I was refused to get. Thanks for listening. And freedom of speech is quite apparent here.
Ms. Williams?
Thank you, Chairman Parent. I have been reading the emails going back and forth. And in defense of our Director of Communications, she responded and sent you all the information that you requested. As far as going into the records or meeting with the HR Director or whatever, the information that you requested from the school division, the foyer, from my understanding on the emails going back and forth, was sent to you on the zip drive. So, everything that you requested was given to you. And that was... The follow-up response from our Director of Public Information also said that all of your items that you requested were presented. And that's all that we can request of her.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Mr. Sergio O'Neill.
If I could have Sergeant Arms come and grab this for me, please, to hand out to the board. I'm sorry, they're not stapled where they are all separated, it's three pages each. Good evening, my name is Sergio O'Neill. I reside here in the city of Portsmouth. That packet that is being passed down, it references an alternative education program for elementary students. It was presented by actually a PPS bus driver and a parent that had been doing some research on alternative education programs for elementary students because of a situation that occurred with her child. And I thought that program was very interesting. But that's not the only thing I wanted to cover tonight. Apparently, through several Facebook posts, inbox messages, whatever the case might be, a lot of PPS staff have identified morale issues. Last night, there was a conversation at a political action committee that highlighted what's for some of those issues. And it was apparent that, you know, we understand the board's role when morale issues are communicated. However, I think at the same time, too, we have to be cognitive of what they're asking about. A lot of the times, the staff is under the impression that the raise that was asked for and would be voted on later on tonight, amongst other things, was the saving grace for the morale issue. Well, I'm here to tell you that's not the case. I don't think any board member would be... It would be wise of any board member to think that that's going to solve the whole entire problem. These teachers are asking, and staff are asking for more than just money. I think what I know for a fact that they're asking for reduced class sizes. They're asking for more support from the administration. They're asking for more parental involvement. Touching on the parental involvement, because that's a key component or something that I'm focusing on myself, is that they were told last night that there is not much that can be done. There is a lot that can be done for parental involvement, especially on the legal side. If the school system takes the money and takes some of the funds and invests in that position, it can't happen. Another local school district in Hampton Roads has done that. And it has gotten a lot of results. Unfortunately, some of our parents have to be held legally responsible for their child. And that's an avenue that just unfortunately has to be explored. We cannot allow these teachers to have students in their classrooms with continuous major behavioral problems and do nothing about it. The story has even came down that administrators are telling teachers, "Don't send these kids. We're not suspending these kids because we want to have a good suspension report so we can reduce the numbers." That's manipulation and it's sad. To have a teacher that have to constantly write referrals over and over again for the same child and nothing is done, that is a problem. How can you have a classroom with some of them with 35 and have a continuous discipline problem and no administrative support? When I asked the question of why do we... The school year before last, we had to hire 200 teachers. School year coming again, 150. I was told that some of that is retirement, which is true. But just how much of that is retirement? I can tell you right now, pay definitely wasn't the top issue. Why these... Why those teachers that left? That wasn't their number one issue for the reason why they left. Pay was nowhere near close to that. I can tell you right now that a lot of the staff that leaves Portsmouth Public Schools is because of morale. I had a lady sit behind me in a political action group committee meeting last night. First thing she said was, "That's why I left Portsmouth, when the morale issue came up." And she wanted to stay. She told me she was almost in tears. She wanted to stay in Portsmouth Public Schools. But being an educator for as long as she was, she could not... She could no longer take it. I had a teacher tonight that wanted to come. First thing she said, she was scared of the reaction that she thought she was going to get from the board because of the last meeting that she had, in which we thought that it was at Crowe Park. And the first thing she said was, "I would not come ever again." You should never have staff people that feel intimidated about coming to the board and explaining what they go through day in and day out. These are your employees. I am a supervisor, times two. day out. These are your employees. I am a supervisor, times two. I know full well if my employees need me, I'm coming, day or night, whatever the time it is, or however I need to be there for them. We have a lot of situations that are occurring around the world with unhappy employees and how they react when they have no other avenue to vent their frustrations. I would like to thank Mr. Lamb for always being one of the top people, and Ms. Hines and Ms. Axel for always being the top names that come up every time I talk to staff.
Mr. Neal, your time is up, but I will, with the board's permission, will grant you additional time. Do you need additional time?
Yes, I do. Thank you.
One minute.
We definitely have, I mean, I'm not saying that others don't listen, but those are the top names that come up every time I talk to staff. I mean, maybe it's something that I'm missing, but, you know, it is what it is. Now, I'm not picking these names off the top of my head. This is just what it is. So I'm telling you that if every board member is informed on what's going on with the staff, it's going to take the work of every board member to work with Dr. Bracy to find out what these problems are. Dr. Bracy, I would strongly urge you, sir, to please take a day to go and talk to the staff that have these issues yourself. Please do not send your chief of schools because they are almost tired of sending them. Nothing against Dr. Carmody, but I'm just saying, they would like to talk to you directly. I think it would, at this point, with the level of some of the information that's coming out, they want to have a meeting with you directly, not anybody under you. And I think-
Your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one question for Mr. Ziegler. Where is Mr. Ziegler? We do conduct exit interviews, don't we?
We conduct, we have an ongoing exit survey, and if the request of the employee exit interviews can be done in person with the compliance.
And you have that, you have that data that you could share with the board as the reasons why they're leaving the school system?
Yes, sir. That's an every month presentation.
Okay, right. I just wanted to clarify. All right. Oh, Ms. Williams, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Chairman Parent, and I, I'm kind of puzzled because if I'm, my memory is, if I'm recalling correctly, it was Mr. Neal that has come before us so often when the suspensions go up, that you, you're, you know, you are admonishing us because we're suspending too many. So, you know, we can't, I don't, I don't know. Now you're saying we're not, the behavior, we're not doing enough, or what, what, what are you saying?
The suspension rate that we were addressing was a minor infraction.
Well, first of all, Mr., if you want to come back, first of all, you, we, you can't say if they are minor infractions because they are confidential. That's, that's all confidential information. We never put out why the kids are suspended because that's federal law. So, so you can't say they're, they're minor, and I do know that most teachers and the principals, they bend over backwards to keep these kids in school, and even the ones that come to us, that a lot of them probably should be expelled, that we put them in alternative education. So usually, when they are suspended, it is something that they really have done consistently over. But I was just confused because you have been one that have, have constantly talked about too many.
Let me clarify that, and thank you for bringing that up. First of all, the data that comes from the Fugine Department of Education shows the categories of what kids are suspended for. Using that information, that's how our, my, the organization that I work with determined, we had our own inference, and with the support of the VDOE, what was minor and what was considered to be major. So the minor infractions were the ones we were asking for the alternative to suspension, which you all have, some of that has been put into place. So, but however, there have been major incidents where students have not been suspended for, which they very well should have been. I can tell you right now, I was a witness to that, one of those incidents, where a child threatened to fight a teacher over $5 that was not even his. That child was not suspended. The first thing that staff person said was that this child is an athlete, and he's not going to get suspended, and that's exactly what happened. So I can, I'm telling you, it happens.
All right. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, but one other thing I'd like to follow up with. You come just about every other week or month telling us about all these teachers that have issues and, and problems, but we don't, we don't get to, you know. I wish that you would at least let the superintendent know who they are so he can talk to them, because right now, we, we don't know. We just hear that there are a lot of them with issues, problems, but if they don't come forward to the principals or the superintendent, there's not really much that can be done, because we certainly want to make sure that people are able to come forward and feel they're not going to be penalized.
Right. If I could, Mr. Parent, just respond to that. If we all know there's a fear factor with some of this, with a lot of the staff, that when they come before and report certain things, especially grievances or whatever the case might be, this is, that is the number one reason when, when I ask, because I do my due diligence, because that's what I do. I ask, "Who have you talked to?" The first thing I hear, where I have reported to administrators, and I felt like I was going to be, there was going to be some type of reprimand for me because I reported, and things of that nature. That's why they don't come to certain administrators, and they don't come to certain members of the school board. However, like I said earlier, there are people on this board that have heard from these teachers day in and day out what goes on. And unfortunately, I don't know why they don't feel comfortable coming to others. I don't know why they don't feel comfortable coming to some of the administrators. Some of them do, some of them don't. I don't know, but at the, at the end of the day, what needs to happen is that instead of them always having to come to somebody, somebody needs to go to them, in fact, on their territory, to find out what the issues are.
And Mr. Neal?
Well, thank you, Mr. Neal, and like I said, if they're coming to those three board members that you named, they never bring it up to us at the closed session, open session, so we don't know. And if, if no one tells us, we don't know. But, but I appreciate you sharing that with us.
Plus, the superintendent has a teacher advisory committee, and he meets with all the teachers. So it seems to me that what all you're talking about, this fear factor, because I heard it last night, that he would know about it, and he would certainly inform the board. The next, Dr. Bracy, did you want to make a comment before I go to the school board?
I didn't want to, to get into this, but I, but I will. If the teachers, Mr. Neal, if they're coming to you, and if they're afraid to speak to anyone else at their school, then why don't you tell them to reach out to me?
I have.
Everybody knows that, so this is not something new. We have a process that we follow. You know, they talk to their administrator. If there's a problem there, they go to the next level, as you mentioned, Dr. Carmody, Dr. Nguyen. If it's not resolved there, they'll come to me. But none of those steps have been done because nothing with any teachers I have received. Now, as Mr. Parent mentioned, we have a teacher advisory group, and it's open. We have small agenda items because the majority of it is open and free for them to talk freely, and some of them will talk to me afterwards, and I will address the issues. And when I come back and meet with them at the next meeting, I go through the items that they brought up and how they've been addressed. So anything that I get, or anything that my staff gets, we address it. So when I hear you come and talk about different things that have taken place, it's new to me, and it's news to me, because I think the process that we have in place is working, and if someone is unhappy about it, they need to voice it to the correct person.
Very good. Ms. Hines?
Thank you, Chairman.
Dr. Bracy, you addressed most of what I was going to discuss, so I'll forward my time. Thank you.
Okay. Dr. Whitaker, do you need Mr. Neal at the-
Oh, yes. Thank you, Chairman Parent. Mr. Neal, how many teachers have come to you with complaints?
I don't have an exact number right this minute. However, I can tell you, there's plenty of other, and let, let me say this, because I know where this is going. It, it doesn't matter if it's one or if it's 500.
I just asked how many.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that was clear, because even if it was one person, that, that person should still have the same amount of voice if it was 500.
The reason I asked Mr. Neal is that I'm a data-driven person.
Okay.
So, have you done a study?
That, it could be done.
Have you done research?
Yes, I have.
What type of research?
I've done the research for almost, plenty of school districts across the nation.
Wait, wait, wait. Have you done a survey of the teachers in Portsmouth?
No, I have not. I have not done that part.
So what you're presenting is what I call anecdotal information.
Well, actually, it's not. I mean, that's just what they tell me. I haven't done an official-
It is anecdotal.
I highly doubt it, but I respect your opinion.
Because you haven't done a study, because you haven't done a study.
So you want me to do an official study to show you where it is?
What I'm saying, Mr. Neal-
Mr. Neal, Dr. Whitaker has the floor.
You keep coming before the board with anecdotal information that's not based on data, and you're, you're bringing forth what I call inflammatory statements that's not based upon any study statistics or data that you have. Dr. Bracy has an open-door policy. I know this myself. So if there are all of these teachers in Portsmouth who have complaints, they should come to Dr. Bracy, and I'm perplexed about why are they coming to you?
It's not necessarily me, not all of me, but the ones I talk to, they do.
I'm sorry. No, you do not.
But if she asked, she asking me a question. She asked me a question.
Sergeant of Arms?
She asked me a question.
I'm just perplexed about why all of these teachers are coming to you with these complaints. And that's a statement. We have no data from, from you. You haven't done a study. You haven't done a survey, and so what you're bringing is anecdotal information, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Ms. Allen?
I don't care to address the speaker. I'm just going to share with the board-
Mr. Neal, you may sit down, please. Mr. Neal, you may sit down.
I was actually one of the speakers at the Political Action Committee last night.
Sergeant, wait a minute. Sergeant of Arms, I asked Mr. Neal to sit down now, or he will escort you out of this chamber. Thank you. All right, Ms. Allen?
As I was one of the speakers last night at the Political Action Committee, that comment came up about morale.
Right.
What I shared last evening, number one, in reference to the numbers that were put out yesterday as to why people are leaving, and why we are hiring people year after year. Number one, I shared that there is a teacher shortage. So we are always going to be hiring people because we have people who leave by retirement. We have people who leave the profession itself. We have people who decide that they no longer wish to teach in our school division. That happens. It's a shortage across our country. When it comes to morale, what I shared last night was that, number one, all of our board members have no issue with talking to a teacher if they have a concern. I don't know anyone on this dais that has refused to speak to a teacher, bus driver, staff member, cafeteria worker, if someone comes to them. What needs to happen, and what I shared last night when someone deals with me, is that there is a chain of command, and if someone brings something to me, I will be asking the question, "Who have they spoken to?" And it is my job to connect them to who they need to speak to. I want people to feel empowered to address their issues. Nothing will get fixed if no one says anything. So if there are so many people that are upset, there are at least nine school board members here that you can come to. You have our email addresses. You can call and make an appointment to speak to any one of us, but you have to do your due diligence. As board members, we cannot and will not get involved in personnel decisions. That is the reason why we have a superintendent, and that is why he has a cabinet. So I think it's important to understand that, yes, while we are board members and Dr. Bracy reports to us, let's give him the opportunity to do what we have hired him to do, which is run the division.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Mrs. Shana Jones.
Good evening, members of the school board. My name is Shana Jones. I'm a job coach, and I do resume building and cover letters for individuals, as well as check in weekly with them until they obtain a job. And me and my colleague, Shawna Ward, she's a life coach, motivational speaker. We wanted to inform you guys about a teen summer job kickoff that we plan to have on Saturday, June 30. We plan to do resume and job application help, mock interviews, and assess whether or not the teens have ID, learner's permit, check-ins or savings account, as well as educate them on the importance of credit management. We will also be doing team-building exercises, as well as looking at their support system to see if they have transportation to and from work. There's, there's currently a price for the event, for the event, but the goal and the reason why we're here is to hopefully eliminate the cost by learning of grants, resources, or assistance that you may have available, because right now, we're paying for the venue, food, and the materials so that we can launch this event. So that's all I had.
Board members, do any of you? Dr. Whitaker?
Yes. What's the, what's the name of your organization, and where is the event?
The name of our organization, Extract-Attract.
How do you spell that?
E-X-T-R-A-C-T, A-T-T-R. And we're having it at Cooper's Restaurant. And in order to use the venue, you have to pay for the buffet style, but if there's another possible venue available, we'll be willing to relocate.
And what's the cost per student?
It's $25. It's, right now, it's $10 for the buffet, and then the materials include, we're doing vision board, and so the materials are the poster board, the markers, the scissors, and magazines.
And have you all, you've done this before?
Yes, we just did one, not a teen one, but we did a vision board party in May 19 with adults, and we talked about resume tips, and we did a piece on goals.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Good.
Thank you.
Ma'am, what, ma'am, what, what time?
It's, it's from 1:00 to 4:00 o'clock, June 30th, 1:00 to 4:00.
Cooper's Restaurant?
Cooper's Restaurant on George Washington Highway.
$25, and it's from 1:00 to 4:00.
Say it again?
It's from 1:00 to 4:00.
1:00 to 4:00 o'clock.
Okay.
And we know that it's kind of like a three-hour crash course, so if possible, if we were to get another venue, we could do it multiple days, if possible.
Reverend Patello, you've had your light on.
Yeah, the only question I had was, what was the age group?
15 to 19-year-olds.
If you have a flyer information, could you possibly email that to me?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
What is your email?
Well, just, we'd all like to have it.
Okay, well, you can email it to the clerk.
Okay.
Yeah, Ms. Chambers, yeah. If you go onto the web, school website, and just click on the board clerk, you can email her the flyer. She'll get it to all of us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for what you're doing.
That's very good. That's awesome. Ms. Hines?
My question was, is there any protocol that she needs to go to, to get it put out through us, or is that still peach jar? Because I know that there needs to be a, isn't there a review process on sending out flyers from the school division, and how would she get that so that we could possibly pass it out from us? And I believe the other question she was asking, too, is if we had any help for her for a different venue to make it a little more, less expensive for the students. Is there anybody in your office that you could have her get in contact with and help her maybe get through that process?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Oh, I had sent me this email, and I had emailed the board.
Oh, that's with the city. Okay. Got it. All right, next speaker, please.
Ms. Misty Pasell.
Good evening. It's, my name is Missy Patel, and I had wanted to come and speak to you all. I did make a post on a closed group about some issues that my daughter was having at a school, and Sergio did mention a couple of the, some of the issues were regarding my daughter. And I was grateful to the board members that, you know, commented and Sarah and Ted about, you know, seeking resolution and putting me in touch with or forwarding the information to Dr. Bracy. So I just want to say thank you for, for your help in doing that. I have not really felt like this situation has been- I have not really felt like this situation has been fulfilled, or taken care of satisfactorily. However, as I got here this evening, I was approached by Dr. Nguyen. And I am looking forward to trying to come up with a resolution to this. Because it's not just, you know, my daughter that I'm hoping to resolve this for. I mean, I had gone through issues when I was a child as well. But, you know, I'm also an employee, as well as a parent of course of public schools. I am a bus driver. And I did do some research about the bullying. And I was really surprised to find out, and not only does it affect, you know, the self-esteem and the confidence of the children, but it also affects their SOL scores and their academic success. And as a bus driver, I'm also able to see, and I can testify for myself and the people that I'm aware of, that there is some issues as far as morale and feeling like we don't have a lot of support when it comes to discipline and correcting behaviors that are not only unsafe on a school bus, but just so chronic and repetitive. I wasn't really intending on sharing a great deal about that. But I did want to at least mention it because there were some people that were asking questions about it and questioning, you know, who to go to. Most of us drivers, we don't know who to go to, honestly. We talk to our supervisor, who is in charge of our lots. I've talked to Mr. Lilly. And there are some issues that we talk to, I mean, we have, I have my daughter on the bus with me a good deal of the time. And I'm disrespected constantly in front of her. I've been called names, I've been cussed at, I've had things thrown at me, I've had seats slashed and graffiti, all kinds of stuff going on. Several times, I've requested to have video pulled. The buses have video cameras with audio and visual. And when I call and report it to my supervisor, I'm told, okay, I'll tell Mr. Lilly. But, you know, just because somebody was cussing you out or saying, calling you a cuss word, doesn't mean he's going to pull the tape for that. It's not really important enough.
Let's, yeah, go ahead.
So I just wanted to at least, you know, mention, that is part of the reason why some of the drivers don't feel really supported. We don't have, we have to take the kids home. If we want to take them back to school because they misbehave, there oftentimes, we're told to just take them home anyway, instead of going back to school because there's other runs that have to be done. And often, because of the shortage, excuse me, drivers like me are doubling and doing, instead of four runs in the morning and four runs in the afternoon, I've done anywhere from 7:00 to 8:00 in the morning to 5:00 or 6:00 in the afternoon. And sometimes, none of them are mine. Because it's easier to take my run and have somebody else cover it because she knows how to make them work, and then put me on where she has nobody else. And that's done frequently. It's just business as usual. And that's why kids don't get home till after 5:00 o'clock sometimes. That and the fact that, and it's not about the pay, it's about the respect, a lot of the time, by the students. And then feeling like by some of the administration, it's like, yeah, 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 okay, okay. They put their feet on the seats and they won't sit right, okay. Well, maybe it's not a big deal to you all, but it isn't, I believe that when it comes to education and in the school systems, we expect students to listen to the teachers in the classroom or they get sent to the office. Well, what are we supposed to do when we're on a bus, you know, trying to get these children safely home? And on a regular schedule, dealing with trains and construction and traffic issues at the same time. So I just wanted to at least go into that. I do believe that there does seem to be a trend of students that are just disrespectful with no consequences, whether it's because it's too cumbersome to listen to the video on every school bus. But I would implore a lot of you to randomly check the video on some of these buses. Because if you could see the way some of these students behave regularly and what we have to deal with, you might understand a little bit more about the frustration level. And I do appreciate your time, and thank you very much.
Ms. Allen?
Ms. Patel, first of all, thank you for your service for Portsmouth Public Schools. We know what you do is not easy. I appreciate it, and I know our board appreciates it. Secondly, thank you for speaking up. You are what we're asking for people to tell us. If you're not getting the resolution at the level that you are, continue to speak up. I'm looking forward to hearing what Dr. Nguyen follows up with you and following out how we can get resolution for what you're asking for. But encourage your fellow comrades to speak up. Tell us if we don't know if no one tells us. So thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Williams?
Yes, I wanted to say the same thing. Thank you for coming and sharing with us. And we have recognized that we really need to take a hard look at some things that are going on in transportation and operation. And I think that's why the board was very adamant in bringing on, in the new position that we are in the process of filling. Because we want someone to come in and take a hard look and make some changes there. Because I don't feel anyone should be disrespected. And if they're calling you names or whatever, I do believe they should be suspended. Now, you know, some of these board members might not feel that way. But I'm one of those that feel that way, that we have to teach children about consequences. And no one should have to put up or tolerate with being called any kind of name by any child. So I thank you for coming forward, and believe me, we appreciate you coming forward. And there won't be any kind of hard feelings or disciplinary action or anything else. We thank you. Because we do realize that we have some issues. And you've confirmed that, and other people are confirming that. And that's why the superintendent is making some major changes over there. Thank you.
I look forward to seeing that, thank you.
And if I can add to that, I met with, within the last week, two bus drivers myself. So when there's a need and there's a concern and it comes to me, I hear them. So I've already spoke with two of them this week about some things that are taking place. So I'm listening, and I'm sharing with our interim chiefs, well, what is it? The executive director of operations and HR. And we've already started looking at some things as a result of what I've been told. So I am listening.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Hines?
Thank you, Chair. I'm afraid I'm going to mispronounce your last name.
Patel.
Patel, thank you. I want to say thank you because I have a hard enough time some days in a classroom of 25, 28 that I'm looking at, that I have somewhat of their full attention to get them to be with me, much less moving an object down the road at 40 miles an hour with that and with that behind you. So I want to say thank you. I also want to say I understand the pressure point that you are. Because if you're being disrespected from the students, and if you're not being respected by your administrator, then you are really in a crock's, and you really do have a hard road to tow. And so I want to make sure that everybody understands the dynamic here. Because it comes at us and it comes at you from two different ways. So my question, Dr. Bracy, is going to be, the student code of conduct also applies on the bus. Am I correct in understanding that? So my next question is going to be, if she has an issue with a student, does it go to that student's homeschool to be dealt with? What is her line of, I mean, I know if I have a problem with a student in my situation, I know where to go. But with bus drivers who deal with seven, eight different schools on a daily basis, then she needs to know how that works as well. And maybe we do need to have reminders about that riding a bus is a privilege, and that the same discipline that gets done at school gets done on a bus, just as a reminder. Thank you.
May I say one thing regarding that? Part of the problem is, it's not just that there's a student that's doing certain things. It's just that we don't always know who it is, because we're watching the road, but we can hear it, and we know it's on video. And it's just sometimes just getting, trying to find out who it is. And I've had, I've tried to get that done, and been told that I'm not allowed to request that. The school has to request that. And there has to be a legitimate reason for them to want to do that, and they have to put it in writing. And there's just all this red tape. Just to give you that information.
Ms. Atkinson?
Thank you. And thank you for your work. I know being a bus driver can be challenging. I mean, you got, you know, you got the students when they first wake up and when they first get out of school. So that's the turn-up time. As far as the discipline and behaviors on bus, buses, I would like for us to, at our school board, retreat this summer. And I do want to bring it up about parental accountability. Because, like I said, with discipline, it is threefold. It's the parents, it's the schools, and then it's us as a board. So what's been happening lately is a lot of parents could come in. So we need to take a look at parental involvement and how we can bridge that gap. And also, I would also like to, at our school board, retreat Dr. Bracy. If we can pull some of the videos as well, I would actually like to see some of the videos. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Ms. Stephanie Liverman.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the board and citizens. I've come up before you before and spoken about trauma-informed schools. The last time I was here in March, I gave a proposal for, it called Tips, for trauma-informed Portsmouth Public Schools. I was hoping tonight to show you a video, but found out that that's not the protocol. But the clerk now has that video. I emailed it to her, and hopefully she will distribute it to you guys. One of the things on that video, what I've been hearing all night, so it's kind of changed what I was going to say a little bit, is a lot of the trauma-informed schools will help with a lot of these behavior problems. It's not going to happen overnight. But these kids who are acting out, they're acting out for reasons, and 60% to 70% of the time. You know, if we can help seven out of 10 kids, that's a great start. So I would like for more attention to be placed on trying to get that done, to correlate that with PBIS that's already in place. And work on, try to get maybe a committee. If anybody has any questions, I just wish somebody would contact me about that. Because that's something that will take a lot of time and a lot of different heads and brains to get together to work out how to do that that will look right for Portsmouth Public Schools. One of the things that I was going to show you on the video tonight, and this was going to be all I spoke about, but something called a peace corner. It's very effective in elementary schools. And all it is, is a little space in a classroom with a beanbag chair, stuffed toys, fidget toys, very simple minor things, charts that a child will come and look at and then fill out, what did I do? How was I feeling? You know, something that they can calm down for five minutes. This is not a punitive thing. The child can, if the child starts feeling out of control and overwhelmed, I'm going to the peace corner. And they go over there for five minutes, and then they're able to come back and join the class in a more healthy manner. Like I said, that's on that video, when it talks about the nationwide systems that has been in play and the positive results they've seen from it. I would like to volunteer myself, that I will go to businesses and ask for donations. I will help create these peace corners. Do you let me know who to talk to? And, oh, this is the big thing. Is it under the authority of the board to okay doing this? Or can principals and teachers decide to do that for their classroom? If they look into it and say, wow, this would really work in my class? You know, can they make that decision? If so, I'd like to have a number, the number of classrooms that need 50 beanbag chairs and 400 fidget toys. I'll go get it. I'll do what I can, because our kids need this. It's not going to happen tomorrow. But if we could have some peace corners in place by the 2018, 2019 school year, I'll work my butt off over the summer to help that happen. Because it will help our kids, it will help our teachers. It's another tool in their toolbox that they don't have to constantly be on a kid's back. They do their own self-regulation. Behavior will improve. It'll take time, but it'll happen. That's all I got to say, thanks.
Thank you very much. Just a minute. Dr. Nguyen, I was asked last night about PBIS. That is, every teacher in the school system, they have been trained in using PBIS. Is that correct?
They have either been trained or they are in the process. We had a graduated implementation, and at this point, we're implementing it across the board.
Okay.
Our teachers have been trained. We do have techniques in place to assist them with positive reinforcements for behavior. And we do use strategies within our classrooms to de-escalate students and keep them on task.
Do you have something that's similar to what she's talking about, a peace corner? Because in my day, it was called, I got sent a timeout.
I was going to say.
Oh, that was a punishment.
That's right.
We have.
But peace corner is a lot better than being in timeout.
We use strategies to redirect and to de-escalate, as I said. And some of the classrooms could have a beanbag, or we do use fidgets. We do use different tools such as that to help our students work off their anxiety or their energy. And so we have a variety of techniques within our schools, yes.
Thank you.
And could I ask a question? Are they being, like you say, the teachers are getting trained for that, but it is across-the-board training? Is trauma-informed care any part of that training? Because a lot of nationwide schools have dovetailed the trauma-informed care along with PBIS. They fit very well together.
What I might suggest is that you make an appointment to come and see me, and we can talk about it. I think I offered you that the last time you came. And we can speak definitively about it, because some of the techniques that you mentioned may not be appropriate for certain classrooms.
I understand, yeah.
Hold up just a minute, we have some board members. Ms. Hines?
Thank you, Chair. I was just going to ask if there was anybody from staff that she could, Dr. Bracy, yep, but it's handled, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Lamb?
Thank you, Chairman Parent. Real quick, the video, and I said you want to give to somebody here about it. But is that video, where could I find it online? Or is it online?
Yeah, it is online. It's, if you Google Edutopia.
Okay.
They're the makers of it. And Edutopia Peace Corner on YouTube, you'll get a direct link to it.
Okay.
It's only two and a half minutes, short video.
Thank you.
Ms. Atkinson?
Thank you, Chairman. Dr. Bracy, I just want to clarify, with what she said, the meditation, if a school was to implement that, that is the principal's discretion?
It depends on what that entails. Because I don't, I don't want to get into, meditation can.
Be religious.
Can lead, so I don't want to.
We call it mindfulness.
Gotcha.
Mindfulness is pretty much the same thing.
We do mindfulness.
Gotcha.
Yeah, we do that.
Okay, and that is allow, that's the principal's discretion to bring that into their school?
Yes.
Okay.
And we have counselors that have gone into some of the other schools and have provided it. We have it, it's almost a full implementation at the, at New Directions.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Yes, Ms. Lisa Rogers.
Greetings, Dr. Bracy, Chairman Parent, Vice Chair Williams, and the distinguished members of the school board. My name is Lisa Rogers, and I am the president of Portsmouth Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. Intelligence is the torch of wisdom, is the motto by which deltas all around the world live. We center our programs and activities around a five-point programmatic thrust that includes a focus on educational development. Locally, we include programs such as Delta Academy, which targets our middle-school-age young ladies, Delta Gems, which targets the high-school-age young ladies, and Embodied, which embraces our middle-school and high-school-age young men. May Week, and have adopted two elementary schools, Brighton and Parkview. Annually, we donate school supplies, provide holiday food baskets to select families, and offer scholarships to local area students totaling more than $6,000. Portsmouth Alumni is an advocate for education and are happy to support you, the teachers, and the students, and the Portsmouth community. We invite each of you to attend our Portsmouth Family Impact Day, which is scheduled for June 19th. Day, which is scheduled for June 30th at IC Norcom High School, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., where we will have informative workshops, great entertainment, health screenings, Zumba, and a community and police engagement basketball game. You are so welcome to attend, and we thank you for your service here on this board, and we, and Portsmouth Alumni are more than welcome, willing to help you do what is ever, whatever is needed to assist the students in the city of Portsmouth. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers. Appreciate you. Appreciate your word.
Also, if the ladies of Portsmouth Alumni who are in attendance could please stand and be recognized.
Absolutely. We have a question, Ms. Rogers, from Ms. Ackerson.
Thank you, Chairman. First off, I would like to acknowledge that Councilwoman, the Honorable Lisa Lucas Burke is in the audience, so thank you so much for attending. Also, can you repeat the event information?
Yes. It is the Portsmouth Family Impact Day. It's going to be June 30th at IC Norcom High School, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you. Madam Clark, do we have other speakers?
No, sir.
If there are any additional speakers, you may request permission to speak from the board at this time.
This is for non-agenda items. Yes, you may come forward.
Greetings and salutations, Mr. Parent.
Good to see you again.
Dr. Bracy, and members of this honorary established body. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
I could not sit any longer. I've been sitting a while, listening. I am a resident of Portsmouth. I live 1706 Parker Avenue. And I have a couple of things that I wanted to say, just because they need to be said. Ted Lamb, thank you so much for being involved in the city, for coming to our Civic League meetings, to being so concerned that whatever's going on, you want to know about. Dr. Bracy, thank you for not leaving us. It's a terrific job that you do, and we are so grateful that you've not given up. Mr. Parent, thank you for what you bring from the system. You know, I remember when you were in the system-
Yes, ma'am. You were on this side, and I was on that side.
That's right.
Absolutely.
And so, I know that you do things from your heart, because you know the mind and the heart of the teachers. Costella, thank you for your wisdom and being able to speak because you have a God to answer to. Thank you for that. And I've been waiting to ask Brother, Rem Brother Fleming, how did you get to be so wonderful? I don't know if it was your mama, or your daddy, or both. But what I remember about him is that, in my coming here, in the years, this is the only man I've heard from the board apologize to the citizens. The only one, as children say, the onlyest one, who apologized to the citizens for whatever the situation was. I don't even remember what it was, but I remember you said, "We're so sorry. Please forgive us." And that's very human, because when we sit out here and look up here, I'm telling you, what we see, you don't even want to know. Okay? But the humanity that comes forth from, these are personal citations that I give because my personal experience sitting there. I sat and I listened to people who don't understand protocol. There is a protocol for everything that you do. So you can't just jump up and answer this person or that person, because that's what you want to do. There is a protocol. There is a mechanism set in place. If you did everything these people want you to do, you do nothing. And so, I understand that. I do understand, too, that the city always had a problem in awarding the school board everything that they asked for. I don't know why, but I do know that a school system is a major attraction for people moving here. What kind of schools do they have? And so, I don't know why they didn't always fund us. We were not asking things just foolishly, but you may do with what you had. And so, I want to compliment you there. I want to say to some of us that you can't just jump up and implement something because you had some questions. We need a pilot study. We need trainers of trainers. If it works here, then we need to extend it. But we know you can't do everything. So I'm just asking you to do what you do as if you have a God to answer to. That's all I'm asking. And I want to compliment you for taking what you take.
That's true.
And I want to tell you that I always worked in Norfolk and lived in Portsmouth, because Norfolk was kinder to me. And now that I'm retired, it makes a really big difference that I gave all of those years of service to Norfolk. But the kids are still kids, and you cannot take responsibility out of the hands of parents. So I would ask you to consider something that would involve the parents. It's not the kids. The same little bad kids that go to school and give a teacher problem, come to my house and say, "Can we play school?" So we need to do something about the parents. I think some of you may remember Herman Clark over there in-
Oh, yes.
When they had that one black school, and they allowed him to do whatever he wanted, and he put the children in uniforms, and the children said all kinds of wonderful, "I am this and I am that." And the children scored higher than anyone in the city. They didn't believe it. They tested those same children again. They did it again. They didn't publish that. But I'm just letting you know that when your heart is in what you do, that's really all you can do. But these teachers can go right through the tunnel. Took me about seven minutes to get to work, and work for somebody else who's going to give them what they need. Just so you know, Chesapeake, Virginia Beach, they can even go South Fork. So you have that problem of being competitive. Just know that. And then still do the best that you can with what you have. That's all you can do. And thank you for doing it.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Madam Clark, do we have any more speakers? Under none. So under Board Agenda Items, I understand we have a speaker. Okay?
Yes, sir, we do. And that's Mr. Mark Yotrowski.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Honorable Board Members, and fellow interested parties.
Good evening.
I come here to address item 9.1, not in terms of the specifics of the budget itself, but in terms of the process. And I come to thank you all for the professional, patient manner in which you presented your case for the needs of the school system. And that appreciation extends to the superintendent as well. I was quite disturbed by the demeanor of council in most of the interactions between the two bodies. There was an air of, of, there's an atmosphere of accusation, an atmosphere of uncooperativeness. It wasn't just, "Well, we're sorry. We just don't have the resources to meet the needs." It fell into the category of character assassination. You've done this. You've done that. You've done the other thing. And therefore, the implication is, you're not worthy of any additional funding. Well, that shows a real short-sightedness. First of all, whatever transgressions that the school system may have committed, real or imagined, it is the students of the school system whose needs have to be considered. And that didn't seem to factor into any of it. Yes, there was funding for security initiatives. Yes, there was a willingness to fund a capital expense for a new middle school. But in terms of pay equity for the employees of the school system, not a bit. And that rigmarole about the reallocation of funds that occurred the meeting before last, phew, talk about self-fulfilling prophecy. So you had already been put off because of the budget adoption meetings council was holding. You didn't even get to put in the request for reallocation as early as you would have liked. So they've set you up for failure. Okay, they decided Tuesday night, yes, we'll reallocate as you've requested. Now get it all spent before June 30th. They couldn't do it. Well, yeah, they could. They could fritter it away on something meaningless, as they've done so many times in the past. So I really appreciate your patience. I really appreciate you all being the adults in the room. And I hope that at the end of this particular election cycle, you'll have a couple more adults to talk to. I am really grateful to Councilmember Whitaker for being the lone voice in the wilderness, standing up, defending the school system, exposing the shabby treatment that your request received at the hands of his colleagues. I just wish there were more voices on his side. So it's my hope that there'll be a couple more of us to hear you and to work with you in a constructive way after November. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Madam Clark, do we have any other speakers for Board Agenda Items?
No, sir.
Thank you. Moving right along to the Human Resources, the monthly report, Human Resources in Operation. Mr. Ziegler.
Good evening, Chairman Parent, Vice Chairman Williams, members of the board. Dr. Bracy, I'm happy to bring to you tonight the HR and Operations Report for this month. One thing I would like to point out is, we would like to congratulate HR Senior Supervisor Jessica Duran, who was elected to a two-year term as Vice President for our state Human Resources Administrators Association.
Very good.
You'll see in my report, the updates for the major projects that we have going on in operations. And in my normal section, where I outline vacancies and hires for the month, separate from the transaction report, you'll see I have blanked that out, and that's because we're planning to roll over for the school year. So we will be updating that as we go through the summer, and as we receive retirements, resignations, and receive new hires into the division, which we've already started to do for 1819. We had our first onboarding session for new teachers this past week in the evening, to make it easier for them. And we welcomed 13 fully-certified and contracted teachers to Portsmouth Public Schools. And we will continue to do that based on their schedule, not ours, to make that easier for them to come to us. We have another evening onboarding scheduled for the week of June the 12th, and we will continue that through the summer, with the goal of having a certified teacher in every classroom to start the school year in September. At this time, if there are no questions, I would ask the board to entertain a motion to accept the transaction report as presented.
Before we do that, we have Ms. Ackerson?
Thank you. Mr. Ziegler, where are we as far as like with the renovations in the summer? Is that going to impact, I know I was sitting in on Parks and Rec meeting, and they were saying that some schools weren't going to be available, and that was impacting the program to where they had to reduce it down, to reduce it by 20 students.
They didn't share with me their numbers, but we did work with them to put them in sites that will not be impacted by summer reservations, by summer renovations. So one place where Parks and Rec often goes into is Churchland Middle School. But with us redoing the restrooms in Churchland Middle School, we can't have folks in the building when there's no restroom facilities. That was the only building that I'm aware of that was directly impacting Parks and Rec summer program.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Hines?
Thank you, Chairman. Mr. Ziegler, I want to say congratulations on 13 new teachers, being that we're all people that travel and go shopping and run into people, and people that know people and conversations get had. I think it's imperative to share a conversation that was, that I was a part of, simply because I overheard it and then asked a question at the end, as I normally do. So, but it was another person from another HR department in another school division that is in our seven cities. And they had attended a college job fair day, you know, where they attended a college, and they put up their table and had all their stuff out, and their applications, question sheets. And in that room, there were less than 20 school divisions that were there. It was a very selective group that was invited to this college. And so, with 20 school systems that were in the room to hire these fresh-out-of-college teachers, there was nine teachers that attended the job fair. Nine teachers and 20 schools that were there to interview and to sign contracts that day. So when we talk about a teacher shortage, and we talk about gaining and retaining and recruiting those teachers, it is imperative that we have our best foot forward. And so, morale is an issue, perception is an issue, and that really needs to change, because it makes your job a lot harder. The 2% raise that we were able to fund this year gives us an edge, but we're not the only one giving raises this year. And so, I just want everybody to understand that there were 20 school divisions in this room, and nine teachers from that college that came to that job fair. Now, where the other ones were, I'm not exactly sure. Did they enroll more than 20? Had they already been signed? I don't know those, I can't give you that. But that is the reality that school divisions across the nation are facing right now. So I just want us to be aware of the intimate details that goes into hiring teachers, and I want to thank you for going out there and being proactive. And I hope that this board can make your job a little bit easier in the coming months to retain and recruit more teachers for our students, my child. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lamb?
Thank you, Chairman Parent. I think we're on 7.2?
No, we're on 7.1.
Okay. I've jumped again. I was going to go on 7.2. I know that you were combining, kind of combining both, so I'll wait.
Okay. Motion's been made. Second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Board members indicate your preference by electronic vote. Madam Clark?
There's eight, yes, one abstaining.
Okay. Now, Mr. Lamb, did you want to speak?
Yeah. The reason why I was abstaining 7.2 was-
Exactly. Got you.
Correct. Was because, since I know an individual on the new hire. Was because since I know an individual on the new hire.
I got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ziegler. And thank you for wearing two hats. You know, it's very difficult when you're in charge of personnel and then you're also in charge of operations. And that can get very frustrating, a lot stressful. And the board really appreciates your hard work.
Thank you, sir.
And I know that you're dying to have this other person on board so they can take over operations and give you kind of a, give you more time to recruit and do things. So thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
You're welcome.
The next item on the agenda is budget and planning. 8.1 is consideration of a contract, RFP number 927-P-1718 for athletic apparel and equipment. What is the board's pleasure?
Move for approval. Second.
A motion's been made. And second, any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Board members indicate your preference by electronic vote. Ms. Stewart, is that slow enough? There we go. Madam Clerk?
It's unanimous.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is consideration of the financial budget report, April 2018. Ms. Stewart?
Second.
Motion's been made. And second, board members, do you have any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Please indicate your preference by electronic vote.
I'm sorry. Who made the second?
Are we going to be all right?
Just a moment. Just a moment.
We're on 8.2. Here we go.
Okay. Open vote.
We're going to wait for you.
The votes open. You can vote.
All right. Good. Now, Madam Clerk.
It's unanimous.
Ms. Stewart, you're doing a great job tonight.
Y'all need to slow down a little bit.
And I'm trying to go slow so that I don't confuse you. Next item on the agenda is the consideration of a revised budget for fiscal year 2018, general fund.
Move for approval.
Motion's been made. And second, do we have any discussion? Ms. Hines.
Thank you, Chairman. Is there any way we can get a brief explanation of everything that is going on in this so that we are clear that all of this will be done by June 30? Because this is a piece of that reappropriation piece. I mean, can we just say that it's going to be done by June 30 and that's what we're held to? I just want to make sure we're all clear and transparent.
I thought we were. I thought we were in the open meeting.
Oh, we weren't open. I'm sorry. I'm used to the door being closed when we're back there.
No, no, no.
Okay. So 5:30 session, just watch it. Got it. Thank you.
Right. I thought we were clear.
I mean, we were back there, but I wanted to make sure it was on record.
Not a problem. All right. Board members, please indicate your preference by electronic vote.
I was giving Ms. Stewart some time.
That's okay. That's all right. Not a problem.
I can slow it down.
We can keep our sense of humor. Come on.
It's unanimous.
Thank you. All right. The next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report. And 9.1 is consideration of the final, final school board operating budget fiscal year 2018-19.
Move for approval.
Motion's been made. And second, board members, do you have any discussion? Mr. Lamb.
Thank you, Chairman Parent. Well, we are at the end of a very, what can I say, difficult and cankerous budget season. You can do that again. First off, any budget that you plan and implement is a very arduous and difficult task. So for all that worked on this budget, I thank you for your efforts on this endeavor. This budget season has been one where I have read this budget multiple times. I've asked several questions, and I've asked for citizen input, and I have considered this budget very seriously. The first budget, or the first round of this budget, which we voted on on March 22nd, I voted against it because I believe that the budget had multiple administrative positions, and yet we were still short on classroom teachers. So it's good news this evening to hear that we were going to have at least 13 fully certified teachers in the classroom in the fall. I stand by that vote that I had then today. There are many things in this budget that I fully support. I fully support a 2% pay raise for staff. I wish it was more, that we could compete with the other districts or divisions in the area. I fully support the additional instructional assistance. As Chair and Parent even said last night, this is something that we've been trying to reach as a goal. I fully support the additional security positions that's in our schools. I am also grateful that City Council did allocate the additional $1 million for security study and enhancements to make our schools even better. And I fully support the new CTE VOTAC position that is in this budget. Career and technical education, I believe, is a direction that we cannot fall behind. It's a must. It is something that younger graduating seniors are looking at, and this is the directions they're going. The one thing that has been said over a couple times this evening is that there is a teacher shortage in many core subjects across this nation. I mean, let's face it. When you do look at the statistics and so forth, a lot of people are not going into education as they once did. And Portsmouth Public Schools is no different. We have a need of approximately at one time, when I had asked, of 30-plus teachers that was needed in this division. Some classrooms have had long-term substitutes serving in those classrooms. In order for Dr. Bracy to give all staff a 2% pay raise, he and his team needed to make cuts that I'm sure that he did not enjoy wanting to do. Part of those cuts were for teaching staff positions, which were vacant, three clerical positions, and one went for attrition. He also had to make a 1% non-payroll cut, and Dr. Bracy, correct me if or where I'm wrong, which some of those areas covered professional development as well. I know that this has not been easy, nor has it been an easy task to do. I still have questions on this budget, such as staff development, use of consultants, and other things. And I have been told that because of the last couple days of what we've had to deal with, a resolution in City Council, something that should have been taken care of quickly, that my questions will be answered expeditiously and next week as well. So with that, this is my reason and my rationale for how I will be voting this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other, any other discussion? Hearing no, oh, Ms. Hines?
Thank you. Dr. Bracy, I just want to commend you and your staff for upholding the 2% that this board has asked for. I want to commend you and your staff for the dedication to the instructional assistance and to our CTE program. It hasn't been easy. I know it hasn't been easy. And while there's, you know, maybe one or two positions I don't agree with, I do agree with 99.8% of this budget. I agree that we have to keep our teachers. Money is, we know money is not the magic wand. That is not why we do this. We do this in order to stay competitive, and we do this because it's what's deserved. So I want to say thank you to you and your staff for this. I'm in full agreement with this budget, except for a few things, and you and I have had those discussions. But as far as I'm concerned, this is the budget I'm voting yes for. So thank you for what you and your staff did. Thank you for taking care of our teachers. Thank you to you and your staff for the recruitment and the retention of these teachers and for everything that you do to keep our teachers and our students safe and secure in our school system. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Ms. Williams?
Yes, I simply want to say thank you, Dr. Bracy, and your team. Dr. Bracy, we want to do everything we can to keep you here with us. And I know the past couple years during the budget cycle has been pretty hectic for you. And I know, I think you've been here like three years, three, four years?
Yes.
And the first year was not like that. So it's like been a major change. But you have remained, you have maintained your cool calmness, and we appreciate that. And I just want to say thank you, and thank you to the staff, especially our CFO, Brittany Dorch, that work long hours at night, and your whole team for making this budget work so that we could give the 2% to the staff. We know it's not, it's not much, not all we would like to do, but it was the best that we could do. And as our former school board member Evelyn Hyman said, "Do the very best that you can." And that's all that we can do. So I just want to say thank you, and hang in here with us. We're going to get better, and we will somehow get through all of this. So I just want to say thank you.
And I would like to say thank you to Dr. Bracy because he and I have been on, I feel like we've been on the battlefield for a number of months, and we've had to stand toe-to-toe. And, you know, my dad always taught me, "Son, if you don't stand for something, you don't stand for nothing." And sometimes you, it appears that the board and the City Council are in an adversary relationship, which should not be. But we are elected by the community to represent our children and to represent our staff. And it's our responsibility to make sure that we are just as competitive as the other school divisions, and that we offer our children the same 21st century tools that every other school division offers theirs. I had the pleasure last night, once again, I commend Ms. Allen, Mr. Lamb, and the people from Portsmouth. The bottom line is that we all want to work together. If we don't work together, then we cannot be a cohesive community and will never accomplish the things that City Council, and I see Ms. Lisa Lucas Burke, because I do know at your retreat that education is important to the City Council, as well as economic development, as well as the improving the image and having a smart city. All of these things, we want to work with you. It's not our goal, I didn't run to be an adversary or to have an adversary relationship with City Council or with anyone, because I think we have to respect each other. And I'm very happy that Dr. Bracy and his staff, they have worked, and they have gone back, and they have reworked, and this board has made suggestions, made recommendations. We have, Dr. Bracy had individual meetings with each one of us. And it was interesting that from those meetings, that all of us had the same three top choices. And that was, number one, a 2% or better increase for our teachers. Number two, CTE, career and technical education. And we want, of course, school safety. It's very important. And I look forward to working with you and the rest of the City Council members as we move forward in this adventure of building a new middle school. And I think we can accomplish a lot if we work together and try to respect each other. Now, Reverend Fleming once apologized for a meeting, and I guess as chair tonight, I apologize because I don't like to have to have an adversary relationship with anyone. But as the chairman of the school board, it's my responsibility to make sure that decor and respect for each other is carried out. When we don't respect each other, then we have, I have to, as a point of order, I have to make sure that order is maintained. So if I've offended anybody tonight, I apologize to you that it's not ever my intentions to do that. I'm not that type of person, don't want to be that type of person. I want us to work together for what is best for our children. That's what is important. Thank you. Now, at this time, we're going to have, Dr. Bracy, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, did you want to, did you have any comments?
Well, I was going to do it on my report.
All right. We've all, we've all had enough discussion. Are you ready to vote? We got to vote. All right. Please indicate your preference. There you go. Ms. Stewart, I gave you plenty of time to get ready. There we go. What is the vote?
Eight yes, one abstenance.
Praise the Lord. We got it passed. Wow, another year. All right. Now, Dr. Bracy, it's your turn.
Thank you, Chairman Parent. And this budget season, I mean, you would think after three budget cycles, it would start getting easier. Well, it's just the opposite. It gets a little bit more challenging each year. But it wasn't always that way. You know, when I came in February of '15, we had a smooth budget cycle, and we didn't have any problems with reappropriation or any of that. But, you know, I know the tides change, so we have to adapt and go forth with it. But this, you're thanking me, I know I'm getting the praise, but I didn't do this alone, and I didn't really do a lot of the heavy lifting. And I have to give praise to my cabinet, who work to get the information from the people out there in the field, from CNI. Dr. Nguyen handles that. Mr. Ziegler takes care of the operations and HR. Ms. Newsom, our Director of Communications, you know, she has been as heavily involved as Ms. Dorch, our CFO, because every time we presented something, we had to give a reason for it. So usually, it was the three of us in the office till probably around 7:00 or 8:00 o'clock at night, trying to look at our next steps and trying to strategize, because that's what we had to do. It was one of those situations where we had to, this wasn't a game of checkers, it was a game of chess. And it's sad when you're in a situation where you have to try to outthink your opponent in order to achieve your goal. But we adapt, and we do what we have to do. And I'm pleased with the team that I have and the things that they've done. And I also want to thank the board for your support in allowing us to do what we needed to do from our, starting with our finance committee. You know, we'll run our ideas by you, and you all give us feedback, and the meetings with the chair and vice chair that I have every other month, and sharing different ideas and thoughts of what you think may work, and sharing our ideas, and getting together with the different departments, such as technology, trying to upgrade our systems and put computers in the hands of our students and our teachers for instructional purposes, and having to explain that. So thank you all for what you've done and what you will continue to do. I'm in for it. I signed up for it.
Amen.
So I want to see it through. And I know we're going to be fine. So I'm looking forward to the next school year. We're going to, we're going to continue to do great things, and I'm glad this part is behind us.
Yes.
So that we can move forward now. But this is the time of the year that we're at our busiest during the summer. You know, there's a myth that we don't do anything during the summer, but actually, this is the busiest time of the year for us. We look forward to the kids coming back to school and the teachers. So I'm just, I'm glad it's behind us. And thank you all for the support.
Thank you. All right. Board members, any comments and concerns from board members? Good. Ms. Allen?
I just wanted to share with the public that this weekend is the 28th Annual Umoja Festival, and we will have representation from Portsmouth Public Schools on Saturday, the 26th, from 12:30 to 2:00. The Churchland High School Performing Arts Excellence Dancers will be taking place over at Festival Park on Saturday. So come out and support Churchland High Performing Arts Excellence Dancers at the Umoja Festival this weekend. 12:30 to 2:00.
Okay. Ms. Hines?
Yes, Chairman. Thank you. Dr. Bracy, I just want to say thank you for setting the clock back and the eight minutes that, you know, the snow penalty is now gone. So, you know, my first grader likes the 3:55 instead of the 4:03. I'm just saying. But I want to thank you, and I thank this board for remembering that we added minutes and that those minutes were taken away and not absorbed as they were years ago. But number two, I want to specifically thank teachers, administrators, and students. This is not a fun month in our business. This is not a fun month in our business. And I say a business because, you know, September through April, it's school. Come May, it's the business of testing, and it is the business of putting your best foot forward every single day, especially for those teachers to have a smile on their face. My husband makes candy runs for me to, you know, Walmart or Target at 9:30 at night so I don't have to do it at 7:30 in the morning to make sure kids are happy and at least have something on their stomach before they sit and take a test for three hours. But I know that we have done everything that we can do, and I know the students are working hard and doing what they need to do. But teachers and staff and students, I want to say thank you. Parents, I want to say thank you for making sure your kids are school on time and that they're fed and that they're studying and doing their homework. This is when school becomes a business, and it's, it's just the way that it is, and I'm sorry for that. So hopefully June gets here and we get to have some popcorn and a few movies before we go home for the summer. And I know those are bad words and, you know, but, you know, everything's tied to reading, so we'll just tie it in like that. So we'll critique the book and the movie. So I just wanted to say thank you for what it is that you do every day, and good luck. And I know we're going to have some growth this year, so thank you.
I just want, as a reminder, the 2018 high school graduations will be, will be held Saturday, Saturday, June 16, at the ODU-TED Constant Center as follows. 9:00, Wilson High School; at noon, I.C. Norcom; and at 3:00, Churchland High School. So we'll see all of you there if possible. Okay? Do we have any other business that needs to come before this board? If not, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. This meeting is now adjourned.